Today is February 13th, 2024, and the time is 7:01. Could we have roll call, please, Jamie?
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Here.
Mr. Hutt.
Here.
Mrs. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Here.
Mrs. Vincent.
Here.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Here. Could we stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, as a reminder, if you wish to address the board during public commentary, please make sure to fill out the public commentary forms located on the table back there and turn them in to the Board Secretary, Jamie. Mr. Shaw, are there any additions or deletions to our agenda this evening?
We do have one change tonight in our agenda, and that is underneath New Business B3C, which is CTE Van Purchase. To correctly reflect that, the purchase will be funded through 61A Funds rather than 61C.
Can we get a motion?
I move to adjourn to approve the agenda. It's amended.
I second.
Could we have roll call, please, Jamie?
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Hutt.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. That brings us to Superintendent Hammond. Superintendent Shaw.
Thank you. So as a reminder to our board, we did understand that in our Zoom meet, in the live streaming, the ability to hear requires us all to make sure we push our buttons, so that way we can. So please move your mics forward, so you can have that happen. But tonight, I'm excited. I have Jackie Linderman and Andrew Hoppert with us, who are PBIS coordinators, district level coordinators for this year. And the reason why we've asked them to come in today, they're going to do a short presentation on positiveness for this week and our challenge that we have for kindness. And that is why I'm dressed with a Michigan State gear on tonight, because typically I would not show up like that. But today was about supporting your favorite team out there, and so it had to be Michigan State. So with that, so that's why I'm dressed. So if you two want to come up and dive into the presentation, I appreciate that.
Yeah, good evening. I'm Jackie Linderman. I'm our elementary PBIS coordinator.
I'm Major Hopper. I'm the secondary PBIS coordinator.
It is an honor to be here this evening and share some of this information with you guys. We have had an incredibly exciting week here in the district. So we launched the Great Kindness Challenge this week. And I'm going to give you an overview of what that's about and kind of where we're going with that. So basically, this was an activity that was...
Jackie?
Yes.
Grab the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
We're good. So the Great Kindness Challenge is actually an activity that is supported through an organization called Kids for Peace, which was founded by a high school honors student and their neighbor, who also happens to be a mother of two. So what we have orchestrated here is during this week, starting yesterday, we rolled out the Great Kindness Challenge, which was supported by our Student Board of Delegates. And this so far has entailed positive messages on our marquees, on our display monitors, kindness stations, as Mr. Shaw mentioned, a kindness spirit week, and Great Kindness Challenge checklist. So, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. This has been a K-12 effort. This has happened across the district, which is super exciting. And to provide a little background information on what this is all about, the organization Kids for Peace and the Great Kindness Challenge was actually featured recently on Good Morning America, so we wanted to share that with you. So if you'll take a look.
Welcome to this morning's Ray of Sunshine. Gio is downstairs. Hey, Gio.
Hey, George. Okay, so listen, Ray is here, and that means we're going to have a lot of fun right now, because we've got some amazing kids from Kids for Peace. They've all made a big pledge to spread love this year through the Great Kindness Challenge, and they want you to join them. So we're going to talk to them in just a moment here. You guys are all rays of sunshine, all right? And they are part of the 20 million children worldwide who have pledged to perform a billion acts of kindness thanks to the nonprofit organization Kids for Peace and its annual Great Kindness Challenge. And we are here with the group's executive director, Jill McManical.
Welcome to GMA.
Thank you. Delighted to be here.
Oh, absolutely. Tell us about the kindness challenge. What is it about, and why is it so important right now?
So we need kindness now more than ever. Kindness is not just a nicety, it is a necessity. It heals, it unites, it lifts people up. And with the Great Kindness Challenge, that's exactly what we're doing. We're making kindness a priority.
And you have two of your student ambassadors right here, Chuck and Crystal.
We do.
Welcome to GMA. Okay, so actually, I have a note here, because Chuck, you did 100 acts of kindness during this challenge last year. You want to double that this year.
Yeah.
How are you going to do it?
Okay, to double my kindness this year, I want to volunteer in charities and charitable activities in school and contribute any way I can. I also want to pick up trash in my area, recycle, help the environment, and to encourage my friends, family, and communities to do the same.
Oh, that's amazing. Yeah, that's amazing, Chuck. That's amazing. Crystal, your nickname I heard is kindness, and you love to volunteer with your mom. Why is it so important for you to volunteer?
Me and my mom love helping the community, like giving food, coats, and clothes, because it doesn't matter how old or young you are, you can still be kind and make a big impact in the world.
That's, see, and that's the lesson that you are all teaching us this morning. Thank you all for being so amazing. You're doing amazing jobs, and to the 20 million kids and to your group.
Thank you so much for having us. Yes, kindness matters.
And this year's theme is create kindness, and many schools tell us that this is the happiest week of their whole year. And we have the story of two more amazing teens spreading sunshine around the world as part of this Great Kindness Challenge that is coming up on GMA Saturday. Cannot wait to bat. So glad to have them with us this morning. Thank you, Gio.
So as you can see, this effort is big, and it's really exciting to be a part of it. So what we wanted to share a little bit about was our why. What is our why for doing this? Why are we placing such an emphasis on kindness? So to talk about that, we need to talk about empathy for a second. Empathy is really the ability to put yourself in someone else's shoes and try and understand what it is that they might be experiencing. Research says that empathetic people have the ability to connect with others on a deeper level, and this leads to individuals being helpful, being more invested in one another. So kindness plays a critical role in empathy. When we are kind, we are engaging in that tuning in phase, where we can kind of pay attention and really try to understand someone else's experiences. In that, we are showing empathy, right? When we notice and understand, we are compelled to act, and that often takes the form of kindness. Research even indicates that kindness can have positive effects on our physical health, on our self-esteem and happiness, and it helps build strong communities. And that's really, really important and relevant, because putting this all together was a really beautiful team effort. And a lot of folks invested their time in making this happen. So our Student Board of Delegates spent an afternoon at Central Office selecting the quotes that would be displayed on the marquees. Those were their choices, painting the kindness station signs that you'll see in some of the images we're going to show you, and choosing the Spirit Day themes. Those were, that was all our students doing. MPS Print Shop was huge. They did so much great work helping us print a lot of materials to share with our students to get this up and running. And presentations were shared with admin in January, a slideshow created for teachers, a PDF for admin to share with their staff, information on our weekend review, and Mr. Shaw created a video as well to communicate plans for the Great Kindness Challenge to our staff. Central Office Administration very graciously helped bag materials, helped make deliveries to the buildings. So it was a really beautiful collaborative effort. If you'll take a look, we've got some images up here of our Student Board of Delegates really hard at work helping us get this up and going. So it's, it's really been amazing, amazing. So I'm handing over to Mr. Hoppert.
So I'm excited to be able to share some of the details of how this week has gone so far and kind of what the plans are moving forward. So I want to start by thinking about what those kindness stations were and the work their Student Board of Delegates have done to make sure that the kindness stations do what they're supposed to do. So our Student Board of Delegates were the ones who also decided what these kindness stations would be. They're the ones who selected what these activities were. So at lunchtime or at the middle school, they did it during their enrichment time. Students were able to take part in these kindness stations where they were making some sort of craft or they were engaging in another way to spread kindness around the building. So for our elementary students, there were two specific things that they did. They could, they are doing either a high five for kindness, where they write on paper handprints or draw kind messages that would either be shared out with the rest of the building or they could give them to a specific friend. And then another one is that they would create posters for kindness, where students would sign their name or write or draw a message of kindness to be able to display to the whole building, which is really, really exciting and really engaging for them to be able to do. Our secondary students are doing also two different things. One is links of kindness, so they're making paper chains with kind messages written throughout. And we've got some pictures of those, and they're really neat. And another thing that they're doing is creating friendship bracelets, which they can either keep and wear as a reminder to be kind or be able to give to other students. And they've really, really enjoyed this so far. So this is students at the high school yesterday writing their messages of kindness and creating those chains. And then this is the middle school today, creating their bracelets and really having a good time just engaging and interacting and having fun and keeping kindness as that focus, which you could absolutely see in their enthusiasm and their excitement as they move forward. The kindness checklists, which are provided by the Great Kindness Challenge, and were aptly printed by our print shop, which we really appreciate, give students kind of like an absolute checklist of ways that they can be kind, extra emphasis on things that they can do that really focus on these concepts of caring, including self-care, respect, and gratitude, and inclusiveness. At the end of the week, if they complete their checklist, they will be kindness-certified students, which is really engaging, and they really, really have enjoyed the challenge so far of adding extra kindness to where we're at. This was really fun to watch the students, the Student Board of Delegates do. They got to choose what comments and quotes were going to be displayed on our keys and our monitors. And just reading through all of the quotes that they picked, you can kind of see how this is really indicative of how they see kindness in their own lives and how kindness and love is such an important thing for them. So Wendy Kraus was able to make these into these beautiful displays, which are really nice. And this will kind of carry on to what's happening in the community later on, which is exciting to look at, too. And then we get to Spirit Week, and Spirit Week has been so far an absolute party. So we started off Spirit Week with Never Too Old for Kindness Day, where students throughout the district were challenged to dress up as a senior citizen to honor the idea that no matter what age you are, kindness is important. And kindness, receiving it and giving it can give you all the benefits in the world. And we have really cool people in our district that had a lot of fun with this. I think here are some people from Arborwood and Waterloo and the middle school and the high school. And here are some friends at Raisinville who really took the challenge on a little bit of leftover costume from 100 Days of School. And it's really kind of cool to see how excited people are and, you know, being able to engage with that. Today, as Mr. Shaw said, was Team Kindness Day. I had to change out of my Charles Woodson jersey. I kind of wish I hadn't, but you know, that's where we're at. And tomorrow is Valentine's Day, so we want kids to dress in red and pink to, you know, celebrate both holidays. And then PJ Day is on Thursday to dream of kindness. And then some buildings, we gave buildings the opportunity and almost the challenge to do other things, to build on it. What's specific to your culture and your building that is really exciting? And as our buildings do, they took it and ran. So the High School today wrote cards of appreciation and encouragement that are being sent to every building to talk to different staff. Totally their idea, totally rolling through it, which is awesome. Arborwood had a door decorating contest for messages of kindness and messages of love and inclusivity. And the middle school also had a poster challenge with that same theme. And our staff and students took it and ran, and it's been incredible to watch and see how enthusiastic kids are hanging on with this.
So our, our community has really come alongside us with this as well. So to really help students see how far-reaching the benefits of kindness are, we asked them to display messages of friendship, empathy, togetherness. We provided those messages that they could select from, and it was awesome. It was awesome. Within the last week, the number of business owners that have reached out wanting to participate is moving. It's moving. We have future plans as well for collaboration with the County Convention and Tourism Bureau. It's just really taken off. So we put some images up there, so you could see the folks that have participated. But it's just been awesome. They've participated, whether it was on their social media, on their marquee. They've just really been all in, and it's been phenomenal. So if you take a look, we've got some of those up here for you. The quotes and images are really, really beautiful. And like I said, some of this you'll see is on their social media page and some of it's on their signs. But this has been a lot. It's been a lot. Yeah, it's been really exciting. So in thinking about that, it is so inspiring to be able to look at our own data and see where our children are going with this. It's been amazing. The Great Kindness Challenge is really designed to continue to support our efforts around raising awareness for kindness in our district and in our community, while also really facilitating meaningful action, not just talking about it, being about it, doing it, right? So if you take a look up there, that number, 133,317, is a number of times that our students have been acknowledged for behavior that is respectful, responsible, safe, and kind just since November. So it's amazing. It's incredible. So we really appreciate you guys listening and letting us share this phenomenal news. So I'm going to let Mr. Hoppert wrap up.
So we're always interested in sharing and continuing to grow with this. So if you have any questions or thoughts, we'd be happy to share this resource out to you, so you can look at all the resources that we've been able to use and that we've referenced throughout our presentation this evening and throughout our work. And we're really thankful for the opportunity.
Thanks for coming in.
Yes. Thank you to the two of you for all of your hard work and putting, taking the lead along with Jamie, Wendy, Jen, and I mean, just a whole slew of people. And it was shared, its idea is it's just a continuation of the work about student behaviors and expectations that we've been working on this whole year. We had a personal goal, and can't wait to see when we get to the end of the week, potentially no suspensions this week and/or reduced number of referrals, just whatever it's going to be there. So we'll see how that all goes. But I really commend the team for this. You know, when we think about 45, 600 students in our school district, and we start to think about the power of one and the importance of this work right here that we're doing, if it impacts just one child and makes them think more about being kind to others, it would have been worth it. And so, but what we're seeing, though, is it's actually many more students and building that idea right there. So I thank you guys and everyone else that's put time into this. It is, it's a wild time right there, and I love, too, that we're branching it out in the community, because it's, we're in this all together. That's the mentality. We can't do this alone, and so that community's all. So a big thank you to all of you and your time and efforts here. So appreciate it, and that's all I have for my comments.
Okay. That brings us to public commentary, board agenda items only. Darla, do we have anyone? Okay. Ah, let's see. That brings us to board discussionary and action items, acceptance of reports. We have our resignation report. Is there any discussion?
All right. Upon hearing no discussion, Mr. Cook, could you step up to the podium, please? You can grab that mic, so that way everyone that's in the video land can hear you. It's already on for you. So in your, in our packet was, Mr. Cook is going to be retiring. So I'd like to, if you would just take a moment and share a little history of your time at Monroe Public?
Sure. Well, first of all, I would like to congratulate Jackie and Andrew on that effort. It's very powerful. We've seen it in our classrooms already this week. We had a little kindness board that we created, heart-shaped messages. Within an hour, we had about 15 messages on the board. So it really changes the tone. And I'm particularly thankful for the be nice to an old person that they did yesterday. I was feeling the love yesterday at Raisinville, so. Yeah, so I've decided to retire, and it's a big day for me. It's 38 years in the classroom. I like to say I started at the bottom, and I liked it. So I had no desire to move out of the classroom in my, my career. 22 years here, I've actually worked on five continents. And the last 22 years were here in Monroe. I don't want to hurt anybody's feelings, but when I left Liverpool in 1985, I hadn't to explore the world, I hadn't planned on 25 years in Monroe, Michigan. It wasn't on the bucket list, but, but I have to say, I've been very grateful and very fortunate to have been accepted the way I have been in this community. And I've met some marvelous people, some amazing students, great colleagues. It's been a roller coaster, but it's, there's been some marvelous experiences and great memories. As you know, I had a hand in the, in the soccer program on two separate occasions with quite a bit of success, several league titles and district titles, both in the early period in 2000, from 1998 up to 2008. And then I just came back again. I was talked out of retirement five years ago, and I'm going to continue to do that, stay involved in the soccer. It's on a good trajectory right now. We have a growing program, and the freshman class will be very strong. So, so that's going to be my retirement hobby, is to continue to work with the Monroe Public Schools soccer program. I worked at four schools in the district. I was at Lincoln and Christian Seale. I miss both of those buildings. I thought they were fine architectural buildings, but you know, that was a necessary decision at the time. So then I moved to Manor, and then I've been at Raisinville for the last 10 years, which I think is the most marvelous place to be as an elementary student. If I was a kid and I was 10, and I had a place like that with those fields and woods and just the space. So it's been a great place to spend the last 10 years. We did have an IB program for a while. I understand, you know, why we're, we're moving away from that, and it's okay. But for five years there, we really raised some horizons, and I thought we, we have kids who are speaking very strong Spanish now, which they wouldn't have had before. So there's been some real benefits to that program. And you know, it's just, it's been a good, it's been a really good part of my career in Monroe. I think it's a marvelous community. It's like a little microcosm of, I'm sorry, I'm going on a little bit here. But for me, it's like a microcosm of America for me, you know, in the spectrum of people that you meet. And when it works here, it works, it gives me hope for the whole, for the whole country. When people need help here, there's a line of people out the door ready to, to provide whatever you need. And it's very powerful for me, so I feel very lucky to be here for this many years. And I wish you all good luck going forward. I'm not going away. I'm not going to be leaving the community. I'm not going to Florida. Too many old people in Florida, I think, so.
Oh, yeah.
I'm in denial about that, so. And I'll continue to help with the soccer program. And I wish you well, because I think that the challenges for public education are greater than ever. There seem to be more and more problems that we're expected to solve, and the plates, the teachers' plate seems to get fuller and fuller. And we, and they're just, every day I see just marvelous, enthusiastic, caring, empathetic, to use the word, teachers in every classroom. It's inspiring, and I'll continue to promote the quality education that I see every day from principals. And a word from my own principal, I know Andrew's here to tell his dad. Scott, Scott Hoppert, I've had some fantastic principals in my career all over the world. And Scott Hoppert is head and shoulders above all of them. He's just an amazing, amazing leader, and he just outworks everybody. He's just, he has so much compassion for those students. And I'm very lucky to work for Scott, so. So all in all, it's been a, been a good journey for me. And I've taken up a lot of your time with this. It's a big day for me. Thank you. I'm very grateful for the opportunity I've had here for 22 years. And as I say, I'll be around, and I wish you all the best of luck. Okay, thank you. And if I just, and if I may, my wife isn't able to be here tonight, so my eldest son, Daniel, is stepping in for her tonight. And he did start his educational journey at Waterloo, by the way. So he got a very good foundation when he started his schooling. Was that 20 years ago now? Yeah, yeah, okay.
So one other thing, before you put the mic down, Ian didn't share this, but he does represent Monroe Public Schools at the national level. So if you could share a moment about what you do at the national level.
So yeah, so I'm on the board of the Michigan High School Soccer Coaches Association, which is a board which represents, you know, six, 700 coaches throughout the state. And once a year, we attend the National Convention, which moves from city to city. And in January of this year, it was held in Los Angeles. So I attended. It's an opportunity to network with coaches from around the world. So I know how familiar you are with global soccer, but Ajax of Amsterdam, the Scottish FA, Borussia Dortmund, Arsenal, Chelsea, a lot of the professional clubs will send their coaching. And they're trying to get in to make an impression in the American market. There's a business aspect to it. But they send their professionals and their coaches over and their youth coaches, and they do field sessions, classroom sessions. I attended sessions on everything across the spectrum, from relationships with referees, with parents, with booster clubs, with youth soccer as well as high school soccer. So we actually, and this doesn't directly relate to Monroe Public Schools, but a lot of Monroe Public School children play for Monroe United, which is another organization I'm involved in. And we just, on the basis of my visit to Los Angeles, I met with some, some people from what's called the Coaching Academy, the Coaching Manual in England. And we just signed a partnership with Monroe United to use their materials. So a lot of our, and it's cutting-edge coaching materials. So a lot of our children, and there's probably eight children in Raisinville who are Monroe United. They wear the shirts all the time. So they've got the benefit via their coaches of some, you know, state-of-the-art teaching and coaching methods and techniques, so. Yeah, so you know, I'm promoting Monroe whenever I go. I always wear the Monroe logos and stuff, so. Yeah, it's, keep me busy in my, in my retirement, so. Okay, thank you.
So we truly appreciate your time with Monroe Public Schools, all you've done, and then also representing us at the national level, at state level. It does mean a lot. So again, if we can give a hand, here for this. Thank you, sir.
All right. Next, we have our consent agenda items. Are there any items that a board member would like to have moved off the consent agenda item and moved over to new business? Hearing done, could we get a motion?
I move that agenda items B2A through B2E be considered as a consent agenda.
Is there support?
Support.
Jamie, could we have roll call, please?
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Hutt.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes. Mr. Shaw?
Thank you. All right. I know that we had two people listed on here, Rachel Krueger was a, is a new hire, and Jared McDuffie are either of them here. Step up, introduce yourself. You have to use that mic, please, and what you're going to be doing for us.
Hello. My name is Jared McDuffie, and as of Monday, I started as an academic tutor at Arborwood. So as an academic tutor, I plan on taking on the near impossible task of making math fun and engaging for the students. So I'm very excited. This week, I just kind of got my classrooms to, my students together, and I'm putting together the activities this week. And next week, I'm excited to hit the ground running.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congrats and welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
All right. So that takes us to new business.
Well, there's one thing before we move on. I see you sitting out there, Leah. Is there anything on DECA and/or on BPA you want to share?
Well, I'm going to go to the steer sheet.
Yep.
She is our instructor that is taking students to the DECA, BPA, if she's our staff officer.
Yep.
And she has a couple of students here. So if you have any questions for them about BPA.
Oh yeah, come on up. We've got a couple of extra minutes right here.
She's taking a very large group this year, 15, 14, 15 students.
Oh my goodness.
Victory advisors. Yeah, it's a lot.
So if you pick up the microphone and share what the leadership conference is, the BPA State Conference is about?
What part you'll be taking, part taken in.
Yep.
All right. So the part.
Hold that mic right up there.
So the part that I am doing is payroll accounting. We went to the regional conference, December 17th, I believe, somewhere around in there. Right? So we went to Wayne County Community College in Taylor. So we went up there. We took our test. I won payroll there. So I'll be going to do that same thing over in Grand Rapids.
And your name is?
I'm Logan Jewell.
And you're in what grade?
I'm a senior.
Wonderful. And then you're going to go to college for payroll?
I'm going to go to college to become a CPA.
Beautiful.
Okay. So I'm Morgan McLeod. And Logan didn't mention, but he's actually our president of BPA. I'm not a officer, but I'm going to the state leadership conference in Fundamental Word and Fundamental Spreadsheet Applications, which is basically just Excel. So.
That is awesome. Well, I know you guys will do exceptionally well, the whole team will. And Anne, wish you the best with all of them. And we really appreciate your representation and coming tonight and speaking in front of the board, too. So great job.
Do you guys need me to talk about DECA?
Well, sure. Yeah. We love learning.
So DECA is a pretty similar thing. We went January 12th to our regional or districts, as they call it in DECA, to Eastern, where I placed for payroll applications. So it's just like the basics of payroll, not payroll, just accounting applications, sorry. So I just like did the basics of accounting, demonstrated them. Then I talked to a judge about that. And then we'll be going to Detroit to do that, me and Chris Stein, who's also a senior. So we'll be going up to Detroit, doing our conversations with some professionals in the area. And that'll be it.
Excellent. Well, appreciate you both for all you do.
Thank you.
And that brings our agenda to new business. But before I turn it over to Mr. Shaw, I want to provide some background and context to our agenda items. All items on our agenda have either been discussed in depth at a prior work session and/or have been addressed in our weekly, weekly board briefs. So although it may seem that we move quickly to these agenda items, we want our public to know we have thoroughly done our due diligence and review prior to this meeting. Also, as a reminder, our work sessions are open to the public. They start at 5:30. And that brings us to Mr. Shaw for the second reading.
So tonight, we have in front of the Board of Education, the second reading and adoption of board policies. We went through the process of review of policies, first reading at our last board meeting, and now the second. This would be an action item for the Board of Education to take. And these items would be, as we're moving to recommend approval of these policies effective February 13th, 2024. And they are 0122 Board Powers, 1420 School Administrator Evaluation, 3120 Employment of Professional Staff, 3130 Assignment and Transfer, 3131 Staff Reductions and Recalls, 3139 Staff Discipline, 3140 Termination and Resignation, 3142 Probationary Teacher, and 3220 Professional Staff Evaluation.
Can we get a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. And Superintendent Shaw, thanks for reading all the titles that makes this easy. I will recommend the approval of the aforementioned policies.
Is there support?
Support.
Can we have a roll call, please, Jamie?
Yes. Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachenova.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Got to pressure button.
Yes. Mr. Hatt.
Yes.
Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Zemmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. That brings us to the M A S B Board of Director election. Is there anyone that would like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that I move to vote for Mary Vincent as the candidate for the M A S B Board of Directors, Regent Seven.
Okay. Could we have a roll call, please, Jamie?
Oh wait, we, we got to discuss.
Okay. You better start pressing your mic so I can hear you then.
I just want to say that I've reviewed all the candidates thoroughly. And this person stands above and beyond all the other candidates, bar none. This is the superior candidate. And she should be elected and we should vote for her.
I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion?
But there were several candidates that are up for this position. So it's not, yeah. There's others. There is others.
Very many up for it. And they did have good qualifications, but again, none met the qualifications of this candidate.
I concur.
All right. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Absolutely.
Mr. Hatt.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachenova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Zemmerman.
Absolutely. 100%. The motion passes. That brings us to the CTE van purchase. Mr. Malanopsi.
Thank you, sir. Tonight, we ask the board to approve the purchase of a new Ford Transit passenger van from a dealership within a 50 mile radius at a cost not to exceed $72,000. The purchase will be funded with 61A CTE funds.
Can we get a motion?
Yes. I move to approve the purchase of the Ford Transit van at a cost not to exceed $72,000.
Is there support?
Yes.
Discussion?
I do have a couple of questions. Maybe Mr. Meloviski, who would pay the insurance for this van?
I'm going to defer to my colleague across the pit.
The insurance for the van would?
The district would pay for that.
How much would that be, you know?
I do not have the per-vehicle allotment in front of me.
Now, how much do we pay? We have another van from CTE, right? How much do we pay for that van?
I don't have the per-vehicle allotment in front of me.
Who would pay for the fuel?
The district pays for the fuel.
On the first van, on the first, first van, how much do we pay for the fuel in the first van?
I don't have exact numbers in front of me. It's, it's, when it's used, the, the staff that are using it typically sign out a CTE department or club credit card and fill it up at whatever gas station is near their location. They don't necessarily use the fuel station that's at Fenmore. And it is typically charged to the program that's using it as far as the supply costs. So it would come out of CTE funds for the majority of the time.
And who pays for the maintenance of the vehicle, like oil changes or tire rotations or be whatever that happens?
The district does.
Is that done through our, sorry. Sorry. Is that done through first vehicle? Is that done through other organizations?
The current existing CTE van is on the fleet list with first vehicle. So they do do the maintenance on that vehicle.
Like on, we have another vehicle for a CT as well. How much do we pay for that maintenance?
Which, they have multiple vehicles. Which vehicle are you referring to?
How many vehicles do they have?
I don't have the number of vehicles in front of me. But I know they have more than just one CTE van. Well, they have just one CTE van, but they have other vehicles that are used to.
Materials between the school and the job site.
Okay. And the Sky eleven thinks that. So okay, gotcha. Now where would the vehicle be stored then?
I believe it would be stored at Monroe High.
Yep.
And where at Monroe High? In the parking lot?
Would you like me to speak to that? So I can't believe.
Come on up to the microphone first here, Leah.
I can answer some of these questions. Currently, your question was about the other vehicles that CTE department manages right now. We have the van and then we have a truck that Tom Bell uses for the construction class. That truck was very old and used when we got it. And that maintenance happens out of our automotive department. It's not under any type of warranties or anything like that. The van has always been serviced at Fenmore. As far as storage of those vehicles, until we get the CTE storage building built, yes, it'll be at, in the parking lot at the high school, in the staff lot.
Now who's going to have access to that vehicle then?
The CTE van?
Correct.
All of the CTE teachers, all of the CTE students, any CTE event that would be happening. So for example, we have DECA and we have BPA going to events. Right now, this is actually kind of a really great example. Our current van would only hold seven students. So we are chartering a bus at the tune of around $3,000 to transport students back and forth to their competition this year because that's the transportation we have to do with, with 14 students plus the advisors. If we had the two vans this year, we could have all of them going together in those two vans. Right? So that, that's an example of use. But any CTE program that needs it to transport students or staff to professional development, student events, job shadows, work-based learning opportunities, we have, it's, they get used for many different reasons.
Now, like I know we also have three smaller vans that we use in the transportation department. Have you sought to get any of those for your?
When we request transportation to transportation department, they tell us what's available to us. And if they have something that's, can accommodate those students during school hours, they, that's always our first ask. We are very limited to 9:15 to 1:30 PM during the school days for use of any of the district transportation and drivers. So that doesn't always fit our need. But that's always our first ask. We go to them first for every trip before we seek alternate transportation.
Is it, is it not as title of the van going to be in, does a grant require that to be put in the name of the state of Michigan or is that put in our name?
That, it would be owned by the district and it would be titled by the district.
So then at the end, I mean, are we required to, if we dispose of it, well, we'll dispose of it somehow. But are we, is the proceeds of the distribution then given to us or is it given back to the state?
It would be our vehicle. The funds are state funds and they're not as, we still have to indicate on our asset inventory what grant funds were used to purchase it. But it is not restricted like it would be if it was federal funds that were used to purchase an item.
Any other questions? Roll call, please, Jamie.
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Hatt.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachenova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent. Yes.
Mr. Zemmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. That brings us to the 2425 calendar. Mr. Shaw?
So as I explained in our last meeting we had for our work session, our 2425 calendar was brought to the Board of Education one year ago. And, but each year we always come back and reevaluate. And so the adjusted 2425 calendar is up, is, is presented to you during the workshop. And we are requesting for your approval of the 2425 calendar.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to move that we approve the recommended 2425 calendar and let everyone know that I was very impressed with the amount of consideration for student success that actually went into these modifications.
Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion?
Yes. There was a really good discussion surrounding the reasoning behind the two-hour late starts compared to using the traditional half-days that Monroe Public Schools had previously been using. And the reasoning is that the attendance for students on half-days is not as good as on the two-hour late starts. So that's why we're continuing to use the two-hour late starts for professional development days instead of the half-days for professional development days. Now, there still are some half-days on the calendars, but those are typically for vacations and things of that nature. So I just thought that was a really productive conversation from earlier today.
We have a roll call, please, Jamie.
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Hatt.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers. Yes.
Mr. Van Wachenova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent. Yes.
Mr. Hatt.
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes. That brings us to coach, coach resolution. Mr. Shaw?
So it is a recommendation to approve the coach resolution in your packet for the 2324 school year as per the MCEA master agreement.
Is there a motion?
Yes. I move to approve the above-named coach, well, the coaches that are in our packet for the 2324 school year as per the MCEA master agreement.
Support?
Support.
Any discussion?
If I could, I just want to make the comment that for those of you who have been around for a while, Gretchen Elliott was in past years our varsity coach for the girls, very successful, very respected. And I'm just glad to see that she's getting back into coaching.
Could we have a roll call, please, Jamie?
Yes, Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachenova.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Hatt.
Yes.
Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes. That brings us to the recommendation for reinstatement.
Thank you, Mr. President. We ask the board to consider the recommendation of the committee to approve reinstatement of student A and move to accept the recommendation of the committee for full reinstatement, or move to reject the recommendation of the committee and conditionally rein, and conditionally reinstatement, reinstatement student A, or move to reject the recommendation of the committee and deny reinstatement of student A.
Is there a motion?
I move to follow the recommendation. Sorry. Move to follow the recommendation of the committee.
Is there support?
Support.
We have a roll call, please, Jamie.
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Hatt.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
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 Yes, and the motion passes. Then we have another recommendation for reinstatement.
Thank you, Mr. President. We ask the board to consider the recommendation of the committee to approve reinstatement of student B and move to accept the recommendation of the committee for full reinstatement, or move to reject the recommendation of the committee and conditionally reinstate student B, or move to reject the recommendation of the committee and deny reinstatement of student B.
Is there a motion?
I move to accept the recommendation of the committee.
Support?
Support.
We have a roll call, please, Jamie.
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Hatt.
Yeah.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachenova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Zemmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. That brings us to old business. And as we have none this evening, I will turn it over to Mr. Shaw for superintendent comments.
All right. So thank you, sir. The very first comment we have for tonight is, as many of you are aware, the passing of Bob Nichols, our former board member. And this being our first board meeting after, I just wanted to take a moment and just read this that Robert Nichols was a former board member and retired teacher who passed away suddenly on January 31st. Bob was first elected to Monroe Schools Board of Education in 2016. He served on the board for seven years and was elected president by his peers for his final four years. Prior to his board service, Bob taught in Monroe Public Schools for 25 years as a secondary science associate's teacher. Bob was a strong advocate for students, teachers, staff, and all things MPS. He was past president of Monroe City Education Association and served on the district's Positive Monroe, Positively Monroe Committee. Forever Trojan, Bob was dedicated educator, caring colleague, leader, and friend who made a positive impact on all who knew him. He will greatly be missed. At this time, please join me in a brief moment of silence as we honor Bob.
That brings us to public commentary.
Two more things.
Oh.
Count Day is tomorrow, so we have our spring count day, so we please, our kids, we timed this whole community kindness part tomo- uh, together this week, like, all right, let's have a huge, have everyone get here tomorrow for our count day. Entrepreneurship is the week of February tenth through the seventeenth. It's been declared Entrepreneurship Week in Michigan by the Michigan Department of Education. As you already know, Monroe Public Schools has a strong program utilizing Gen E Institute curriculum and our district holds a young entrepreneurship, uh, showcase each spring and that showcase will be on April the twenty-seventh, Saturday, so it'll be a big event at high school. Black History Month is, uh, February is Black History Month. Our schools are celebrating in a variety of ways. Waterloo Elementary is honoring the contributions of African-Americans with a special Facebook post each school day in February highlighting their achievements. Some of our schools have spee- I'm sorry, special bulletin boards, while others are sharing information in classes or via announcements. And then the last one is Career and Technical Education Month, February, lots going on in the month of February. So C T classes enable students to develop workforce skills and we've seen that right along and are appreciative of our students going to the DECA competition and, um, to the west side of the state also for B P A and are thrilled for all that we do and, and I wanna say a special thank you to Leah and her leadership with our C T program and continuing to grow it. I believe last I was told until she fixes it on me here in about thirty-three seconds is that we have just over, uh, eight-hundred-and-fifty to nine-hundred students at Monroe Public Schools that takes part in C T E. And if you think about Monroe High School, having approximately thirteen-hundred students and having eight-hundred-and-fifty or nine-hundred students taking part in C T, that's a remarkable number. Not all students will go into a C T field, but they're gaining experience that might be able to be used somewhere else and so appreciate all that you do and, and your leadership out there and so that does conclude my comments for tonight.
Uh, that brings us to public commentary, any topic? Do we have?
We do. For public, but- I'm a little challenged up here. Thank you. You have three minutes to speak, um, and during that three minutes, I will hold up signs to let you know, as your time is concluding, to help you keep on track. So, uh, with that, Robert Tucker, would you please come up?
Hello? Okay. Hello, I'm Robert Tucker. I am here, um, for, you know, for my children and also for the children in this community. I've never been to a board meeting, this is my first. Um, I think the last time I was here is for my son. But I see that number eight, it says, don't come with complaints and so forth. So, I have, um, a question, I have, where do I find solutions for these complaints that I do have? Since I won't bring them up. But where do I get those solutions? I see it says, other channels are provided by the board. So I ask you all, um, where do I get these solutions? Where do I get this channel help that we were talking about?
Go ahead, darling. So, are you referring to the agenda or?
I, um, like, I have my own complaints.
Okay.
Where are you getting this list from?
Well, the list is right here on the paper. It's, it's right here, so-
Maybe I can explain what we normally do.
Press that button.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to, oh, I'm stepping forward. What we normally do is we take input from the public here, okay? We give you full three minutes to do what, you know, say, use, piece. And then what happens, the administration will get back with you on the concerns, well, that, what you said, so, and I do appreciate what you, what you said.
So, uh, uh, so I can address this?
Yeah, so I'm gonna go ahead and start over, cause I don't think we actually, um, did anything and then I'll give you your three minutes to be able to share what, what you have to say, okay?
Thank you. Well, I have a few concerns. I have three young men that's been in Monroe for quite a while, a while now. I'd say about nine years, going on ten. I have experienced, we come out of Lansing, Michigan, okay? I had to make a decision, do I keep my children in Lansing? Because Lansing environment is a little bit more dangerous than Monroe, okay? And I can get a grip on what it is for a young black man to be living in a, um, in a environment that is very dangerous. But the school systems are pretty awesome. Yeah, um, I love the school systems in Lansing. But I come here to Monroe and from elementary, I said, oh, this is an awesome place to be. Awesome place to raise children. I love the, the elementaries all the way up to maybe middle school. By the time I get to middle school, I found it a little challenging, um, as a parent, to watch my children transition and they're not, they're teenagers, but they're different. And find out that a s- a light that was in my children's eyes has been put out. And I, I, I find the concern, I thought it was just, well, yeah, you know, it's teenage stage, you know, they go through their transitions. And I had a conversation with, um, a situation that happened at, at the high school and it was with staff and the staff was speaking to my children inappropriately. I, I do not swear in my own house, I am a Christian, I am a born again, I believe in Jesus Christ. I do not, uh, we don't listen to secular music, we listen to Christian music. My, one minute, thank you. But to find out that the staff was speaking to my, my son in the same, a manner that it doesn't, it doesn't happen in my home. And he admitted this and I, and I said, well, you portray to be one way in front of me, but it's another way when I'm walking out the door. Thank you, thirty seconds. So, I just need some, some help, I need some support from you guys. It's gotta be a, a better way that we can help these children. Communication-wise, discipline-wise, even how the school is set up-wise, like, I can't even go into the school without having an appointment, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It's not like it used to be. So, I get it with COVID and all the crazy stuff that's going on in the world. So, that's all I can give you right now.
Thank you so much for coming in, we appreciate it. I have no other comments.
That brings us to board member commentary. Are there any board members that wish to do commentary tonight?
Thank you, colleagues, for your support and your vote for me for the M A S B Board of Directors. As you know, Region Seven is immense. It spans Monroe County, Hillsdale County, Ingham County, Eaton County and the list goes on and on and on. So, here's hoping and, uh, election results will be out in March, so we will see what that looks like.
Well, thank you, actually, for being willing to serve.
All right, that concludes our agenda for this evening. Our next regular, uh, board meeting will be held on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. It will begin at seven P M. Our workshop will be held prior to that board meeting, beginning at five thirty. Can I get a, a motion to adjourn? Support?
Support.
Show of hands? We are adjourned at seven fifty-eight.